Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, April 2nd, 2018, City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Condon, here. Alderman Curry, here. Alderman Devine, here. Alderman Glad, here. Alderman Mahavich, here. Alderman Santi, here. Alderman Schaefer, here. All present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the public comment portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council for items on the consent agenda? And I ask that any public comment regarding the pit would be done at this time and not during the discussion time for council. And so that's what I would like to do at this time is open up for public comment. So at this time, I see that there's a James Molnar. If you could please come up to the podium.
I'm glad you guys raised your monitors. I used to hit my head up. My name is Jim Molnar, and some of you don't know I'm a retired police officer here in McHenry. And I retired about three years ago from working with the city and moved to South Carolina. And in South Carolina, I started a ministry for the local police departments. In this day and age, police officers are challenged more and more all the time. If you read the press and news clippings and stuff, police are just hassle all the time. It seems like they never do anything right. And I started this ministry to boost their morale, so to speak, and let them know that there's a lot of people in the public that do care about them and that they pray for them. And the ministry involves passing out a little wristband. It's called Brothers of the Badge. And on here is a Bible verse, John 15:13. And the verse says, "No greater love has a man than he lays down his life for another." Well, the verse talks about Jesus, and we just celebrated Easter, and we know about Jesus sacrificing his life for our sins. And the verse also applies to police officers that they stand in the breach when there's a problem. Police officers are there all the time, and they stand up for the public that can't really stand up for themselves. So Chief Burke, I have a present for you. There's 100 wristbands in this bag, more than enough to cover every officer that you have plus the staff. And I just want to tell you that there's cops in South Carolina and all over the southeast there that I've passed these out to, and they're all praying for cops all over the place. And we pray for the police officers every day at our church. So here's one just for you. So I wish you well, buddy.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
The next on the list is Marionator. May I step up to the podium?
Thank you. As you said, Mayor, my name is Marionator. I live in Glacier Ridge. I spoke to City Council last time we're here, as well as my husband and other members. Just wanted to give you all an update. Since we last were here, Randy Willie was kind enough to, and gracious enough, on a Sunday, to take four of us out for a tour of the pit. And it really was nice. We opened up a dialogue, and he answered some of our questions, some of our concerns. And Scott Curry has been phenomenal through all of this, helping us with everything. I know that he sent you a letter regarding everything that he thought would be necessary for any kind of negotiations. And I just want to impose upon you to look at the reclamation plan and look at what they are calling their, I think they're calling, in the reclamation plan, they have phases. And if you look at that rather than the parcels that they have prescribed, if you look at those phases, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, those are the ones that really, really impact the residents. And that is the southernmost part of the pit. And if we could somehow get some kind of closure for us, because looking at what we saw out there and what we know, the worst is yet to come for us, the noise, the dust, and all of the problems are the worst, the worst are yet to come as they're moving north for us, not so much for our friends on Ridge Road, but for us. So we need some kind of deadline when that portion of it will be done. When we talked with Randy, he thought five years, he was going to take that back and talk to them and see if they could be done with that area in five years. That's the southernmost part. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for some kind of closure, and 14 years is not closure. So if they could finish that southern portion, and even if they have to mine beyond their demand and store it and pile it up somewhere until they need it, if that could be done and they could remove all of the equipment up more towards 120 and use that when they mine on the north side of 120, that would, I think, really, really please the people in Glacier Ridge, Wood Creek, Otacumse, and even those over on Ridge Road. So that is the only thing that we really, really are asking you to do for us, is just give them the four years that they need, and then they can come back in four years and get the 10 years that they need to finish out. But please, just get them out of our neighborhood in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next person on the list is Jody Bork. Is that correct? Do you step up to the podium?
Yeah, thank you.
Say your name for public reference, please.
Sure. My name is Jody Bork, and I reside in Burning Tree, which obviously is off of Ridge Road. And when we refer to the pit, we're talking about, of course, mire material. And I know that some folks that have homes within the area are concerned about the aesthetics, the noise, and so forth, and of course, I am as well. However, I actually have a child that is asthmatic, and about yearly, I spend at least a week in the hospital with her. And unfortunately, residing in Burning Tree, we are subjected to the dust and the materials that are floating through due to mire material. We are unable to, in the summertime, open our windows. Since we've resided in our home for the past three years, I have not been able to open my windows in three years due to the dust. We also have to have specialized filters within our home to collect the debris that's being, again, floating through, through mire material. So again, my concern is, yes, the noise is, of course, an issue, but the benefit, the health care is, of course, the utmost. And there is a school that's located right there as well, and I can't help but to think that those children are also inhaling whatever is being stirred by machinery in that pit area. So my question to all of you is, what type of studies have been done? Can we see some studies? I'd like to know if the EK... And you can see the dust. You can see it, they... Silvery debris that literally, if you leave your windows open for two hours, you can see it on your tables, on your countertops. What is in that debris? What are we inhaling? I want to know. I want a report. And do not think of passing any decision until we, the homeowners, that breathe this every day, until we know what is in that report. Has never been done. Questions for them, for fees? Is that worth our health? I'd like to know. So again, we're looking for some answers here, and we're not going to stop until we get the answers. And we're holding all of you accountable, and I hope you realize that. So, and I'm sure there's other people that have same concerns, so I'll let them have a moment.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Nick Finia. If you could step up to the podium, please.
Good afternoon. Nick Finia, resident of Burning Tree. I have been to the meetings in the past, you know, and resonated our issues with regards to noise and dust and so on and so forth. And we're able to reach out to our community this past few days and was able to collect some signature petition from them. And I've got 35 signatures here from 61 homes that we have in our community, roughly, I think, 24 homes. It's not because of lack of trying, the people have not been available, vacation, basically jobs, et cetera. But I haven't given up yet, and we're in the process of collecting more signatures. And once I have, I'm happy to send you the write-up and the signatures via email. I have your email of the council members and the mayor, and hopefully in the next couple of days. But basically, as Jody mentioned, the issues surrounding, around the noise issues that we have and health, in terms of the dust that travels through our community. We've had, some of the folks who signed the petitions have some health issues because of the dust that they breathe in, and they wanted me to mention that. Other environmental impacts that we're not aware of, and we did some study in the past a few weeks, because of the mining, there is a possibility that radon could be released and travel to our community, could be natural asbestos fibers released as a result of crushing the rocks that we are subjected to and breathe. So all of those need to be part of the, I guess, should be part of the study that Jody was referring. Has there been a study at all done? And is there determination that we're subjected to any of those substances? And lastly, now least, we've been told, discovered that the city has been in anticipation of receiving $700,000, $800,000, I think, in terms of fees, but most recently, it's been determined that it's only $60,000 a year in terms of fees that is collected. By our numbers, and the number of trucks that we have calculated going in and out and the materials that move out, we're looking at probably $15 to $17 million worth of revenue that this company is making. And this is a very miniscule number of amount of money that they would pay the city for the health hazards they create, the unsightfulness of the facility they've created, the future issues that we have to deal with in terms of reclamation, and the liability that potentially would be left for the city to deal with, and torn-up roads, additional traffic that we have, and pretty much all the hazards that go with it. Is it worth it? Is it really worth it for the city to approve this for $60,000? When you look at it and see, our community alone, 61 homes, we pay roughly $750,000 in tax, property taxes a year. Four homes in our community pay $60,000 a year in taxes. So we bring a lot more to the city in terms of, and then we don't excavate things from the community. Instead, we're developing the community. We bring the money to the city. We have jobs that pay taxes, et cetera. So all of those need to be taken into account, see, and weighed out. Who's got the most benefits or brings the most benefit to the city? I have copies of the petitions so far and the write-up. I'll be happy to provide that to you for your review. As I said before, once we have a few more signatures, I will scan those and send them via emails for the records.
Thank you, sir.
So if you'd like to distribute to your members?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. The next person on the list is Jay Matheson. Please step up to the podium. Say your name for public record, please.
I am Jay Matheson. I reside at 6712 Burning Tree Circle in McHenry. We've heard many concerns from citizens of McHenry, from my neighbors. I'm not going to repeat all of those. You've heard it many times about the extension for this contract material. It's still not clear to me what the real benefit is to the city of McHenry, especially now knowing that the revenue we receive from them is, you know, in that range of $60,000 or $70,000 a year. What I'm asking you to do, though, is to frame your decision based on the mission of McHenry, the vision of McHenry, and the strategic plan summary that I see on our website. In short, when we look at the vision and the mission, to make McHenry a community of choice for living, working, recreating for all with unique natural resources, abundant cultural opportunities, outstanding neighborhoods, and a vibrant, diverse economy. And then when I look at the conditional use report, Form C, talks about neighborhood character. Now, I'm framing this, not that we're bringing in new business, but I see this as a new opportunity because the contract's expiring now, and so I'm saying, okay, it's like starting over again for the next contract. And Form C says, under neighborhood character, "The proposed use will fit harmoniously with the existing natural and man-made character of its surroundings and with permitted uses in the zoning district." Now, we do have an overlay on that, but it is a residential zoning district, the way I understand that. "This use will not have undue negative effect on the environmental quality, property values, or neighborhood character existing in the area or normally associated with permitted uses in the district." So I just ask that you consider these things before you make your final decision on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? Last chance for public comment. See none. I appreciate all your comments. We will be having a public hearing on the 16th at 7:00 PM, so please urge you to come to that meeting if you'd like to be heard. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a reading of a proclamation declaring April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of McHenry. The proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion of the precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are renewable resource, enhance property values, and the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the city of McHenry has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 24 consecutive years by the Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Wayne Jet Jr., Mayor of the city of McHenry, and the McHenry City Council, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of McHenry, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the protection of our trees and woodlands. Furthermore, we urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of future generations. Signed this second day of April 2018." I would like to invite all elected officials and the city residents to the annual Arbor Day ceremony on Friday, April 27th, at 3:00 PM, right here in the city council chambers. City forester Mike Harper will present an update on the city's tree program and announce the 2018 tree donations. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we look for a motion for this item, is there any council members that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? See none. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, 6A through 6H. Alderwoman Condon?
I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda A through H.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Condon? Yes. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is individual action items. Discussion to approve transfer of the Class A 19 liquor license issued to Buddy's McHenry Incorporated, DBA Buddy's Pizza, to Wade's Wave Incorporated, DBA Buddy's Pizza located at 1138 North Green Street. I have met with Sean Wade, which has been looking to be the applicant for this, and also the new owner of Buddy's Pizzeria. He had no liquor issues in the past. I'm excited, just as a business owner coming into town like this, and he has passion, aggressive, I'm excited what Buddy's can be here in the near future. So the applicant is here for any questions, but at this time, I'll open up for discussion by the council. Alderman Santi?
Mr. Wade?
Yes, sir.
If you could step to the podium. So your actual date of, once, if everything goes, you know, as presented tonight, your actual date of ownership will be when?
April 16th is what we're shooting for.
Part of your agreement is also Buddy's recipes, that sort of thing, in regards to the pizza and everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I think I have to say is I wish you the best of luck and can't wait to meet you.
We're super excited, coming to the community. We're ready to pour our hardest soul into the restaurant and into the community, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? I see none. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. Moving on, I'm looking for a motion to approve transfer of the Class A 19 liquor license issued to Buddy's McHenry Incorporated, DBA Buddy's Pizza, to Wade's Wave Incorporated, DBA Buddy's Pizza located at 1138 North Green Street. Alderman Santi?
I will make the motion of 7A as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Glad?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Good luck.
Good luck, Wade family.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion to adopt an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow assembly use, outdoor seating, and indoor entertainment for Utopian Roast LLC, DBA Hidden Pearl Cafe located at 1252, 1254 North Green Street, and in ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of a revocable license agreement with Utopian Roast LLC to utilize .45 acres of the city-owned property located at 1246 North Green Street, AKA Newman Park, for outdoor seating and entertainment purposes. Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jet. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow an assembly use, outdoor seating and indoor entertainment at 1254 North Green Street, and execution of a revocable license agreement. I did put by mistake on the ordinance irrevocable. That's a typo, it should be revocable. License agreement between the city of McHenry and Utopian Roast LLC. And the copy I left at your place of the license agreement, the only difference between that and the one in the packet is the highlighted provision in the first 12 months that it cannot be revoked unless it's forecause. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we start discussion, we do have the applicant, Dan Currents, here. Dan, if you could step up to the podium. Any discussion on this item? My council? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, the first thing is that the request to serve liquor up front. What is the distance that we're talking about?
Sidewalk there, I think, a little over 12 feet, 12 feet wide.
Right. So basically, how far out is he planning to come out?
Well, our property comes out like seven and a half feet or something like that, so we would just be on our property in the front, and then we would leave the public sidewalk as it is. So it would look very similar to the theater in the front area.
Am I not right, though? I guess this would be to the attorney that even if his property line shows that he goes out seven and a half feet to the sidewalk area, that sidewalk area is still city easement and the city property, correct?
Right.
So that's a mute... My reservations on that, more than anything else, is, I mean, we just went through a weekend that we hope to see every year, and maybe we'll have a few more events like that in the future, that the downtown area packed, and if you start putting these fenced areas in to serve alcohol, that you're going to wind up with a very short area to move people up and down the sidewalks on busier times, and four or five feet is not a lot. If you have four or five feet, yes, if you have one person, one line going north and one line going south, yes, you can have people. You have one person with a wheelchair, you've got to block up everything in order for that person with the wheelchair to get through. I mean, I just don't feel it's appropriate to be using the sidewalk area on a permanent tightness. You know, I know we allow to have small chairs and, as long as they're not blocking it, but when we have bigger events, if you have some permanent type of thing like that, then there's no way you can move it for those type of events. I mentioned to someone this afternoon, if you go down Northwest Highway, before you get to Park Ridge in Chicago, you'll see a few different types of establishments that I've seen over there, where what they do is they have like garage door windows to where they can take and take them up and open up the fronts to have an indoor patio section that's pretty much enclosed, except for the front, then it opens up so that it's light being out on a patio area, granted, you're not out in the middle in the sun, but then again, when it's 90 degrees, 95 degrees, and you're sipping a beer, not necessarily you want to be roasting in the sun either. So that's an option. I just don't feel that it's appropriate to start blocking up our sidewalks this way permanently. On the other proposal also into Newman Park, for a short period of time, I wouldn't have a problem, but the thing is, is we haven't even decided what we want to see in Newman Park. I know we've talked about opening up that area so that those that are riding down Green Street, those that are walking on Green Street, will be able to see where the parking behind the buildings really is, or where we are, where we have it, and what is it that we want to see over there in Newman Park? Do we want to leave this small trail there, or do we want to open it up to a much larger area, maybe even a recreational area, to where people can take and have tables and chairs? They go down the street, they buy an ice cream cone, and they're walking, and they decide to relax out in the outdoors. I'd rather see a... Where the city provides a public access area there for the whole Green Street downtown area, and again, maybe even a fountain in the center or something. But again, that's discussions down the road. I just don't want to lock ourselves in with something like this. And I guess, considering it's highlighted for 12 months, I don't really have too much of a problem for 12 months, because I don't see, you know, Rome wasn't built today, we're not going to finish it off in the next 12 months, but I think we need to look at that down the road, and we also need to let the petitioner know if we feel that way, that, you know, we really don't have any exact plans of what we're going to do with Newman Park, and whatever we do could affect disagreement. Call the roll.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Condon?
Actually, I like the idea of using Newman Park. I think it's a beautiful spot right there, and getting a usage out of it, I think, would be great. And it might draw people to come down and, you know, eat their cupcake or ice cream or whatever. And it might draw people to come down and, you know, eat their cupcake or ice cream or whatever in that area, too, and getting that utilized, I think it's a perfect spot for that. My question is actually more for Steph. Do we... And I apologize, because I don't remember. Do we, are we allowing DC Cabs to have outside seating in front of there? Is there a specified amount of seats?
We have an outdoor seating provisions in our zoning ordinance. I mean, so there is for public and private areas. So, if this were to get approved, I would recommend the applicant have to follow those guidelines, because we have a bunch of criteria that have to be met, they have to be inspected, and it's not permitted. I mean, if it has to be removed, one of the provisions, it's removed if the administrator asks for, so... I'm not sure off the top of my head about DC Cabs.
So, if we had, so, for example, the scenario that Alderman Glad talked about, such as the chimrocks, the foxtails, we could, the city could request that that not be utilized, outside seating not be utilized for that weekend?
Yeah, I would suggest the outdoor seating, these specific guidelines, because it is specifically for waiver of liability, that's covered in there, and it's so that the seating, it doesn't blow over. Yeah, and it would be covered, so it does not put up on a specific event, that can be covered as well.
Okay. I guess, you know, I see all these other communities that have people really utilizing their downtown, and I think we're getting there. You know, I think our recent event certainly showed that. On, you know, weekend nights, you know, people are going to the movie, they're going to dinner. That's what I wanna see, and I'd love to have options, so I think this is another facility that would give that option. Especially for the summer, I'd love to have a lot of people walking around and just window shopping and stopping where they'd like, so I guess, as long as we have guidelines that would... That they would have to follow, and that we can, on occasion, request that not... They not utilize some of the outdoor seating. Now, that's just for the sidewalk, correct? That's not for the Newman Park area, or is it?
No, this is, this is, well, it actually covers its outdoor seating, so... But the Newman Park is covered through the license agreement.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just for clarification. If they, what they're requesting is, is to serve alcohol out on the sidewalk, that has to be enclosed, so they have to have a fence in there. So, what you're asking, then, is for the petitioner to take the fence down every time there's a doing. It's not something that is going to be just a mobile, portable, fold-out gate. I mean, it's gonna actually be a fence area, because it's gotta be fenced in if we're serving alcohol out there, and that's one of the reservations that, you know, I mean, are you gonna let them have it during the day, but, you know, on certain nights that it gets busy, you have to take it down? Well, it's not something that can be just readily put up and readily taken down. Am I not right? I mean...
Well, there'd be, there's two doors, so they could be kept open. I guess my question would be...
We're talking the fence itself that you have to put in.
Well, there's gonna, the sidewalk is pitched, so that's gonna have to be leveled, like the theater, regardless. I mean, you can't, the way it is now, it's very dangerous for wheelchairs, and it has to be addressed. So, we're gonna have to do something with that sidewalk to make it level. Our plan was to make it level out to the actual sidewalk, just like they did at the theater, and put the fence up just like they did at the theater. So, that would be there regardless. I mean, I don't think there's a way around that, really, to make my entrances handicap accessible. But, so, the two gates at the ends could be left open. But to your other point, right now, the health department does not allow for those open area seatings. We would have to actually put screens on. They haven't gotten that far yet. That may come in a couple of years, but as of this time, you cannot have just windows that open up and people walk in and out. That's not allowed yet. So, I mean, it's a great idea, and I'd love to do it, and we were headed that way, but that's just not at this time. And the other thing you mentioned about the park, I love your ideas, and we would welcome that. I would gladly have it be a space that everybody can use. Our concern really is, we just want a door on that side, and we want it to look nice, not just in the park, but everything. We want our side of the building to look nice, we want the whole thing to be really nice. And so, that's why we were thinking, if we put in a walkway along our building, or connecting to the other walkway, at least it'll keep the grass nice, because people won't be walking just anywhere. But to the other point, the two gates could be prompted, kept open, and people could walk through. That would not be a problem, especially for what, the six or seven days a year we'd be talking about. I also think we're on the side of the street that's not as busy. You know, you're busier down by the theater and Buddy's and all that. There's gonna be a lot less traffic by us.
We're not talking about six or seven days for Newman Park. We're talking six or seven days as far as having to remove the fence.
Right, the parades.
And it's six or seven days right now with it, and who knows? I mean, we've had success with the St. Patty's Day Parade, and with a little bit more creativity, we may wind up seeing a lot more traffic on Green Street with festers. And there might be a couple of other occasions that we might wanna capitalize on, because I think we've just hit the tip of the iceberg with the St. Patty's. And I just think we need, you know... Why don't we just take and have a larger area, and let's just narrow down and make Green Street a one-way street, and take the parking out of there, and we'll make it nice and narrow, and that way we'll have plenty of room to walk. Well, it's kind of a reverse situation. What we're doing, then, is rever, taking and shrinking the openness of the sidewalks down to where you really aren't gonna be conducive to larger crowds. And I don't think that's what we wanna see in our downtown area. Yes, other downtown areas have done some arrangements with outdoor seating in front, but then again, you know, you take a look at certain areas, might have much larger sidewalk areas, or the sidewalk that they might be utilizing. You know, if this was off to the side somewhere, and not the main drag, it might be a lot more palatable to use that way. And that's my concern, more than anything else, is, you know, are we going to jumble this up? But we have the property just north of him that's open right now, that somebody's gonna be developing, and I don't know, I've just heard bits and pieces. I haven't seen anything, but we're talking, they want outdoors seating for 60, I guess, that they're planning on, on their property. And if I was the person that was buying it, would I cannot come back to the city and ask for the same thing if they get approved, to have the same thing for them? And utilize the sidewalk? I mean, then where does it end? You know, I mean, this gentleman says right off the bat that, well, you know, just like Buddy's has, you know, into the park... I don't even know... Bill, is this, this isn't park property, is it?
What, I'm not... Newman Park?
Yeah.
Newman Park is park property.
Has it, has it actually been given to the park when the tra, because this came to the city with transaction when they sold the old City Hall?
We do recognize that as a city park.
We recognize it as a city park.
Yes, sir.
All right, well... Again, I just have a lot of reservations of either or. This development has been going on for almost a year, and now, all of a sudden, we wanna infringe on the public areas, and I just can't see it and accept it.
Alderman Schaefer?
That leads to my question. Since this was presented back in 2017, there's been significant changes to that? Does that be significant enough to, does it need to go back through planning and zoning?
It could, that's your call. I don't, I wouldn't recommend it. Are they significant? Not that significant. It's still an assembly use, it got a little bigger. You still maybe do some retail, you still do an outside seating. Could it be sent back to planning and zoning? Yes. I'm not recommending it go back to planning and zoning. I'm trying to facilitate moving the development forward, that's my recommendation.
Any other discussion by counsel? Alderman Santee?
Mr. Curran, how long you been in the building, working on it?
We acquired the building on April 15th of last year. We didn't get the plans approved until September. The building codes had changed significantly from when we purchased the property to when we actually got the plans. So, the first set of plans had to be scrapped, because the building codes had changed. And so, that made us build new plans, and so now, we have the new plans, and we're moving forward with those. So, we've been there, it'll be a year, on April 15th. We spent of our own money, about $125,000, and we would like to get to the finish line, just like everybody else. And as far as the blocking of the sidewalk, I'll tell you what, you put 50 people on my sidewalk that don't wanna drink, I will open the gates for them anytime and not serve liquor. Believe me, I am for that. If it wasn't about the city of McHenry, I don't think I'd even be this far along. No one in their right mind would continue with this project like I have. But I love this town, I live here, I know how badly people want this shop, and so we're doing it. And, you know, I don't know what else I can say about that.
Okay, may I, back to my first question, though. So, you submitted your first drawings, and they were not...
I believe it was June, it was June 3rd, our first drawings were submitted, and the codes had changed on June 1st. We were told about it June 1st, and I don't think that's anybody's fault, I mean, nobody did that maliciously, that's just what happened. And so, we went from a situation where we didn't need sprinklers, to where we needed sprinklers. It's a $90,000 change. So, I understand the frustration of not having this project done, and I feel it, too. But at the same time, I can only work with the things that have been put in front of me, and then we move along.
Okay, but that brings you to a point, then. I mean, you've got some plans in front of you, you're working inside, and I see that. And now, we're coming to, you know, you're coming with some more plans, some more ideas, probably some very good ideas, but I look at it, and I see, there's an extended period of time before you open. I gotta believe, by what I see on the inside, what I like to take a peek at. And you're coming to us, and you're adding on to what your plans are, and I see it as like an ABC, where let's get done with A before we move on to B and C, in regards to, let's build out what you've got inside. I mean, how much more time do you have left in regards to your build out on the inside?
If I was able to swing hammers tomorrow, full bore, we'd only have about five weeks left. To our plan change, we planned to do retail that faces 120. That's the only part of the plan that's changed, but that's not, that's not what we had permitted. So, that was, that part has never changed. The only thing that we have changed is we took our live room from about 160 seats and moved it to 200 seats. But that's only because, you know, we wound up tapping into this great potential talent that's coming, you know, to McHenry, that I think would be very exciting for Green Street. So, that's really the only change. The coffee shop hasn't changed. The, where everything is gonna be, if you saw those plans, maybe I should have brought them, there's not very many changes. Like, I'm talking, you know, less than, less than 200 square feet of actual changing. So, as we move forward with what we have now drawn, you know, again, we had to stop until these drawings came. Now, these drawings are here, yes, I'm gonna have to take them to the building and zone, or to the building department and make sure there's not too many changes, that they have to redo the permit. But the actual planning and zoning, what we came for, for the planning and zoning, this is just the finalization. We never, we never came to counsel after our planning and zoning meeting. And the planning and zoning meeting was to give us assembly use, so that we could have comedians fly in from around the country and perform. Our planning and zoning meeting was so that we could use Newman Park for outdoor seating. At that time, it was for alcohol. Now, we're saying, you know what, we don't even want alcohol. It's not our thing. Our thing is, you know, what we wanna do. We want coffee, we wanna be open late at night. We'll do our little alcohol area in front. We only came up with that idea because that's what the theater was doing, or, you know, DC Cabs. We thought, oh, what a great idea, let's do the same thing. So, as far as the changes from planning and zoning, I actually don't think there's any. I don't even know what the original count was for the seating of the theater that we brought to planning and zoning, but it shrunk when we were gonna bring in another partner, and then it just went back to the way it was. So, I don't see a change. But, you know, I'm biased with my project.
In your best estimation, what you've got, I mean, what you've got on the inside, how much more time do you need to build out the inside of your building?
I have, if I could get on everybody's schedule, five weeks. I have the actual sprinklers, I have the plumbing, and the HVAC, and the drywall. That's all that's left.
Do you actually own the building?
We have the building as a land contract. Dr. Santee, who owns many properties in town, he actually was the one who bought the theater originally, and he worked with me to move out of the theater so that that project could go forward. We both thought that was gonna be good for McHenry, and he helped me acquire this building, and I have a land contract with him that has a three-year term. So, I have two years left on that, and then I have to buy him out. And obviously, I have to be open in order to buy him out, or I'll wind up doing all of this for nothing.
And so, you've got two more years on that contract?
Correct.
I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you for your...
Any other discussion by counsel? Alderman Schaefer?
Still, on the seating and the alcohol out front, I don't see DC Cabs doing that. I see it on the side. Where's their front seating?
I think the middle area where the party room is, they had, have, somewhere I saw plans to have some tables out there.
They had it up front for seating. People were standing out there the whole time, but...
Director Paler?
Is it, can, yeah, refresh my memory, please.
Yeah, they have an area between the building, the front of the building opens up with sliding glass doors, and they, and the approval was for tables to be set out between there and the railing.
And that was going to be...
In the summer months, they will have a few tables out between the building, front of the building itself and the railing on the sidewalk, that raised platform. If I can get into that sidewalk, actually, the sidewalk at this property has to be raised in front of the building, about seven feet out from the building, which would leave about seven feet of the actual sidewalk on Green Street still. And it's the same idea. So, the raised platform, it'll be one or two steps up to the front of the building, and they'll have a ramp coming from the north to allow wheelchair accessibility from the north. So, you'll come in with the wheelchair, and then you kind of go down as you go to south on Green Street, so on the other side, on the south side of the building, it'll be one or two steps. So, you have a raised platform with a railing, just like you see at DC Cabs and the theater.
And was the amount of space at DC Cabs greater than the 14 feet here?
I, you know, offhand, I don't know the numbers, but it's, it's pretty close to the same. There's a minimum of five-foot sidewalk requirement, what required at DC Cabs.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, number one. What the requirements are, what the look of the downtown area is, there's a difference there. And we're talking closer to 120, and like I said, whatever we wind up doing here tonight is just going to set the precedent of the rest of those properties. So... I guess, to some extent, where we were talking about putting in a fence, and now we're talking about fixing concrete sidewalks and everything else, and we're putting in ramps for accessibility, evidently, we knew we were gonna put these ramps in all along, or how come all of a sudden now we're hearing about ramps and excessive handicap accessibility? You should have had that all figured out with the plans, what you were doing before you even came with anything for the front sidewalk.
Well, again, before the requirement for sprinklers, there would have been no reason to touch the sidewalk.
Oh, no, 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 you would, but you would have had to have handicap accessibility.
No, if you don't, if you don't touch something, you don't have to change it till you touch it. That's kind of the grandfather rule.
You rearranged the whole, the whole building.
But if you don't touch the front doors, you don't have to do anything at that time. And then, as soon as we did that, then it changed. I mean, that's...
Is that correct?
I can't make the...
So that, so once, once you touch the actual sidewalk, what you had to do with the sprinkler system, a company had to tear it up, once you touch it, it has to become ADA compliant?
Alderwoman Condon?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I think that theater in DC Cabs is amazing. And I love the idea of people being out, and even considering how packed it was, St. Patrick's Day, people were able to walk up and down the sidewalk, not the elevated part. They, you just, be polite, you walk by, it's crowded. I think that's great, that means people are down here and enjoying themselves. I think that's great, that means people are down here and enjoying themselves. And if that was carried across the whole length of Green Street, I think it would be great. So if they're gonna do it there, and if they wanna do it even north, I think that's great. That means we have people coming downtown and wanting to be downtown. And, and, of course, we live in Illinois, so the time, amount of time that you're gonna wanna eat and drink outside is limited. But if that's an option, I'd rather have people here in McHenry than going other communities. So having that raised, I think, really does define, and it will, would be easy to close off. I understand that we do have to have it closed off for alcohol use. But whether there is or isn't alcohol, I think that having that raised distinguishes the sidewalk from, from... People could still walk up and across there, just like they can now down at D.C. Cobb's and the theater. But in other areas, I think that's great. I think this is what, at least I envision, I won't speak for everyone, but that's what I envisioned for our community in our downtown, to be active and, and draw people, so I think it's great.
Thank you. Alvin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to invite somebody alderman, when they get a chance to go down, down to the city and watch some of these neighborhoods with all the wrought iron fixtures, all, all in the front of their buildings.
That's great.
And see what it looks like. You'd be amazed. Looks like a prison.
I think it looks great.
Each their own taste, I guess.
Alvin Santini?
Well, we kind of, you get, you've heard some great, you know, comparisons with, with D.C. Cobb and the theater, and what's happening down there, and I'd love to have it up the street where Mr. Kearns had. It just had, there was a real aggressive build-out going on down at D.C. Cobb's and the theater. And, and it was a timetable, I wanted to get things going, and I wanted to get things open. No offense, Mr. Kearns, I just don't see it there right now, I just don't see any movement. I don't see anything happening over there. And now we've got something in front of us that we're adding on to that? I mean, I'd like to see him get something done there. I, I would love to get an invite for a walkthrough to see where you're at. Because I, I, I just haven't seen enough activity there going on. And, and, and I don't know what can be done, but I, I know you've had some ins and outs, and some concerns, and some problems with the deadlines regards to codes and where, you know, what happened. But you've, you've been in the establishment for a year, and, you know, I, I just, I just wanna see activity. I just don't see any activity there, that really, that, that concerns me. You know, because I, I'd like to see something there like what's going on at, at the other end of Green Street. That's all I have for now.
Am I to address that, or?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, well, with all due respect, you are welcome to come at any time. I mean, you've been my, I believe, my alderman since we've been open. And I don't believe you and I have ever met at all. I don't know if that's true or not. So, but my door is always open to you, of course, why wouldn't it be? As far as the movement, and I don't know the exact day that we had the water put in, but we had the water put in. And you were in our building for a time because you knew that Mike was gonna take over half the building.
I, I just wanted to let you know that, yes, I was invited into the building once, and it was for another person.
So everything we had built, up until the time Mike came along, okay? Had to be changed to make room for Mike, who decided at the last minute to bail. And forget my opinion on what happened on that, because that's not relevant, I'll take care of that in Friday. Now, I have the new drawings that basically, because there were a couple of things that did change that I thought were beneficial. Like anything else, I'm looking at, I'll look at something, I'll make lemonade out of it. And one of the things that changed was we decided to make the theater space bigger. We decided, we decided to add a convenience bathroom into our conference room, because we have many, many chamber events that, that come through our doors. So, yes, those are minor changes to me, but they still need to be drawn, they still need to be presented. And I didn't get those drawings till Friday. So there wasn't a whole lot for me to do until I get the new drawings. And until I know I get through this meeting, because quite frankly, I'm at the point too where, you know, if, if you're telling me that we can't do all this stuff, then what am I doing? I don't, I can't have a door that goes out to the park, and now suddenly I gotta figure out how those two hundred people that are coming to a show, let's say only solid half, a hundred, are coming to a comedy show. I gotta figure out how to get them in and out of the building. And I don't know if I can effectively do that. That building is seventy-two hundred square feet. There is no other building that could build out onto the sidewalk along Green Street, because there's just not enough room on the sidewalk, and no one in their right mind would put a sprinkler system in any of those little buildings. You know? So we have a unique building situation there. It's, it's a building that you wouldn't normally see in a downtown area of that size. You know, Wayne had a unique building that was strange in downtown area. And so to find uses for those buildings when they happen, you almost should be thankful. You'd be like, thank goodness, somebody found a use for this building, because they're not easy to find. It's a, it's a, it's a tough building to build in. And it has certain pillars, and, and it's uneven on the inside, and there's a lot of issues. So it's not like everything can just be done like that. It's a tiny building, or it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a building that has these little tiny nooks, and they all have to be dealt with. So, yes, it's a challenge. Did I possibly bite off more than I could chew? I'll admit that, that's fine. That doesn't make me a bad guy, that doesn't mean I'm not gonna get to the finish line. That just means that it's gonna take a little more time. Again, seventy-two hundred square feet, I don't know if you understand the size of it. The theater was twelve hundred square feet, and mostly it was theater, right? So they had twenty investors, and I believe they spent, you know, in the upwards of a couple million dollars, I don't know. Like I said, I have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our own money into the project. I'd like to get to the finish line. Would I love to add twenty investors? Sure, that definitely speeds up the process. But that's not what I have. So I have to work with what I have. And with all due respect, I think we're doing pretty good. If I can get that building done for less than a half a million bucks, and have it look beautiful like I want it to look, and have it be just as gorgeous as the old coffee shop looked. Remember, when we moved into Green Street, when we opened up that little coffee shop, that place was a ghost town. And people would walk into our spot and tell us how beautiful it was, and said they couldn't even believe they were in McHenry anymore. And a coffee shop brings day business to a street. A restaurant, people go and they go home. A coffee shop, an ice cream shop, these are the type of places where people go in the daytime, get their stuff, and walk around, and help the businesses. So I don't know, I'm begging and pleading that we get through this, and we do it. That's all I can say.
I have a question for the administrator, Martin. You know, what, what, what plans have been passed and what Mr. Kearns is doing there right now? He's able to work on the inside of that building today, correct?
Ross, or Ross, I mean, who has to...
Correct.
He can work on that today, correct?
Yes, he has been.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Alvin, left?
All I was gonna say is, you know, seventy-two hundred square feet, I've heard that five times now at least. And yet we still have to go out onto city property, and I just don't get it. Seventy-two hundred square feet, and now we have to give up some of the city property to expand the business. Again, I just feel, you had game plans a year ago, and yes, a couple of things have changed. But then again, some of the things were uncontrollable, some of the things were controllable. So you're the businessman, you're the one that should be solving your own problems and not having the city take and have to give up certain things that our pedestrians and the rest of the downtown area has to give up for that.
That's all I got.
Alvin, correct?
Question for Director Mularick. You said the sidewalk, or at least part of the sidewalk, has to be raised, correct?
Yes.
No matter what happens, that's gonna have to happen.
Correct.
So if you didn't do that, what we're talking about here, what, how would that, how would that be? I mean, what?
Um, well, we'd have to figure out...
You'd have to have a railing, wouldn't you? I mean, if you're raising it more than...
That's thirty inches for a railing requirement.
But I mean, we're talking about a sidewalk, so...
Thirty inches tall, so we're talking a step or two, I think, ten inches at the most, if you're putting up. You, you have to have a walkway minimum thirty-six inches wide, clear width. So, you know, you're, you're gonna raise it up anywhere between eight and ten inches, probably be one or two steps at the far south end of the building, and then it would gradually go to grade on the north end of the building. Because the building kinda sits like this on Green Street. So you're going from a grade level up to one or two steps. The requirement comes in when you, you change out the front door, which Mr. Kearns is looking at improving the building on the exterior as well as the interior, and adding a new front door. And then the improvements on the outside of the building would then fall under Mr. Kearns to do, which, yes, would require, so there is going to be a step there regardless of what happens, if the, if the outdoor seating is allowed or not, there will be a ramp there, yes.
Yeah, I guess that was...
So the idea is make it a little bit wider so that he can put a table out there and have someone sit there and drink coffee or a...
No, no, I understand, I understand what the request is. I guess what I'm getting at is that even if you didn't do that, you're, you're saying there would be a difference from, from the front of the building, sidewalk, sidewalk, street. You're saying this part's gotta be raised.
Up against the building, correct?
So no matter what happens, this is gonna be raised. So you're gonna have to have something, I mean, even, even, even a, even a couple of steps, unless you put steps all along there.
We have to have a ramp for wheelchair accessibility.
Yeah, but I mean, you, for a pedestrian, you'd wanna have a railing.
Ramp, right, what's the height requirement for a railing?
It's actually thirty inches, so you wouldn't be required to have it if there's only one or two steps there?
Yeah, but we wouldn't want a thirty-inch differential in our, in our downtown area without a railing.
Right, right.
I mean, I would, whether you're putting outside seating or not, you would have to have some sort of railing.
Thirty inches.
It'd just be two steps, no, you wouldn't need a railing.
Yes, another question is, is the handicap accessibility able to be done on the side of the building rather than the front?
Uh, potentially, yes, if, if the, if the walkway is allowed to be put there, yes.
I'm just thinking, I mean, if, if we're going to allow some permanent fixture, I would rather see it right along the building, going in the Newman Park area. On that, that south end, at least, you're not blocking up the, the sidewalk. If you're only talking a couple of feet, you know, if you're talking, what, five feet, six feet out, I mean, you're not infringing that much into the Newman Park area as you would to the sidewalk. Five or six feet on the, on the main part of the sidewalk is a heck of a lot more of an impact than that large opening where the Newman Park area is.
So can I, can I just, have you, are you familiar with the property at all?
A little.
The grave?
Not, not so much.
So this gentleman's willing to invest his time and his own money to improve that? And right now it is an absolute disaster with the grade difference between the curb and the entrance to the building. So, you know, one of the things that I look at is that, you know, willing to invest your own time and money into upgrading the sidewalk out in front of your building is something that, you know, we should be interested in.
Because you want to save a little bit of money, doesn't mean that it's gonna go away in two or three years. We're looking at something that is, basically could be forever, or until the downtown area falls apart in two hundred years. So when you're talking about saving a few dollars, there's a lot of places we can save a few dollars. But when you're looking at something that's long-term, you don't look at just saving a few dollars for the city and suffering with something down the road.
Right, but I'm not...
And again, I, I don't wanna, I don't think this is the time or place for an alderman to be convincing back and forth with staff. I think, I think this is a decision that the aldermen need to make, and that's where the discussions would hopefully go.
Alvin Shaker?
Yeah.
You know how in front of Newman Park, we have that, the brick in front of the sidewalk? Would that be continued on, or is that not being looked at or discussed? With anybody?
Is that...
No. Someone?
No, actually, Director Hobson and I discussed that. I, I don't wanna speak for Director Hobson, but I think the, we want Newman Park to have a continuity. We, we like the brick look, and, and definitely Director Hobson and, and I think Superintendent Correa will be part of any improvement.
That's in New, that's in Newman Park, along the sidewalk in front of the building.
Oh.
We wouldn't anticipate that was going on the sidewalk.
If that, that look would be continued on in this...
Oh, on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, in front of Newman Park, on the sidewalk is all brick. Not just, not just in...
But he, I would...
The only place that we discussed having that brick field and the possibility of trying to mimic something would be if in a patio in the park, similar to what we did, what we had asked the D.C. Cobb's, again, we used, we had them use the Riverwalk brick. The other place that we asked them to put the brick in, well, we worked with them, we actually paid for the crosswalks to be redone, and we also used Riverwalk brick there. In terms of extending the sidewalk that's in front of Newman Park north into the area he's going to change, that's not something that we talked about or discussed of putting any brick there at all.
Alvin Santini?
I, I get, if you, on, on our, on, on the iPads on ninety-one, if you, if you enlarge that top picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of get a feel for the comparison of the break to the, to the sidewalk. Is there a code, is there a fire code for that door that he wants to put on the south? Does he have to have that for the amount of people that he may be holding in that building?
I believe that is a required exit, isn't it? We have to put that exit in there for, you know, for the number of occupants in the building.
So you have to put a door in there?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Kearns, you, you stated before, you, you want, you want, you have to have that door, you want that door. I, I guess you want, you definitely want this patio immediately now, is that what you're looking at? Or is that something that you possibly come to us after the inside is done, and, and look at doing a patio at that time?
I'm open to work with the city. I mean, I want it to look just as nice as everybody else. So if you wanted me to do it right away, if you wanted me to push that priority up, then I would put my front windows off. If you want me to revisit it, I'm happy to do that, too.
I think, well, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but just to get the business started, I mean, you wanna get the inside going, because that's, that's your moneymaker. I don't think the patio is your moneymaker.
We wanna get the engine started, there's no doubt about that.
Okay. If, if the council seems, if the other council members seem fit, I, I'm, well, I'm just one person, but I, I'm willing to, you know, to agree to this with just the door on, on the south side and, and the patio to be discussed and voted upon at a later date. That's what I'm looking at, I don't know if there's any thoughts about the front sidewalk area, because I know that's a concern with other aldermen also.
Go ahead, Ross.
All right.
Yeah.
So there is a requirement for handicap accessibility access to the building. So it would require not only a door, but a three-by-three pad with a walkway to another walkway.
Yes.
So you are improving somewhere in the park, a thirty-six inch path, so that a wheelchair doesn't have to go through the grass.
Sure. I understand that, yeah.
That could not be brick.
Yeah, it could be brick.
It could be brick. Great question.
Yeah, so my question is, the door on the south side that opens into the park, that's a requirement for the fire code, so he's not gonna get a CO until that door's put in.
Right, and what Alderman Sandy's saying is, put the door in, and then the walkway, whatever meets handicap accessibility code, but leave the patio out of it.
I'm just, I'm just bringing that up, that's for discussion for the other council members.
Are you saying not do the front at this time either?
That's, well, no, I brought that up also. I, I definitely have concerns about the front also. I just was focused more on that, on, on, involving Newman Park at this time.
And I know the look that you're trying, we've met...
Did you do that on your building too?
I did. And I wish I could sell later there to make revenue, but, you know, but it, it's starting to bring that look on, on Green Street, and that's the vision that I, you know, and, and a whole bunch of investors, and, you know. I, I don't, I don't see an issue with the front. I, I mean, you know, whether there's tables out there or not, that's a whole different, other ballgame. But, I mean, the look and, and what he's doing to improve the concrete, it's not, it's not cheap. I mean, my, mine... I mean, mine was upwards of $15,000 for the front, now I had was a little ramp, you know what I mean? So it's not cheap. So Alderman Cunnon?
I don't understand that if we're going to allow him the door, which he has to have, and we're going to allow a ramp into the park, why wouldn't we want improvements there? Which he, and allowing some seating, it's, what I'm hearing correctly, if I'm understanding correctly, and maybe I'm not, which might be why I'm confused, but it sounded like there was a concern about him getting it coming back later. Well, if we're approving, he's asking for approval now, so either approve it now or don't approve it now. But why make him come back later? That doesn't make sense. It's up to him to be able to financially implement what we approve. That's on him as a business owner. He's coming before us saying he's got a plan for it and so we need to say yes or no. And as far as the outdoor seating in front, I mean, that's a whole nother issue, but remember that that sidewalk's going to be changed. I mean, so, yes, we have the right to approve or not approve outdoor seating in the front, but the ramp, the sidewalk's going to be impacted and is going to be delineated anyway. Part of the sidewalk is going to be delineated anyway and separated. So keep that in mind. It's going to be very similar to what is down further by the theater and that, and maybe the elevation isn't as high, but it is going to be delineated. There's already going to be a separation. It's not like...
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I asked the question and to see if he was, would be comfortable with going with the door and finding out that, actually, yeah, the door has to be done. That has to be done. And I'm sure he'll agree with it either way. Well, he just made a statement that he was willing to agree with that, you know, just with the door. My major concern is the meat and potatoes of this place is on the inside and, you know, before patios on the side or on the front or what have you, he needs to get this business up and going and I hope that you're focused more on that and getting that up and going because, you know, that's where your bread and butter's going to be and as soon as you get that open, you'll be able to, you know, to be able to get these acts in here and getting the musicians in there, what you're planning on doing. And I remember seeing it at your other place. It's a lot bigger facility, but, you know, I guess I'm more focused on seeing activity and seeing build out on the inside. I just don't, I just don't see it.
Well, I have comedians booked from the second week of June all the way through the summer. They're flying in from Los Angeles to New York, so I think in my head, I've already committed to a date. But it's your, you know, you and I should be best of friends, so we need to figure that out at some point.
Okay.
But I think this business needs to be open and I would like to do it in a way that makes sense so that you've got really nice things on the street. Getting open and having it be right is more important than just getting it open. It's privately funded, it's going to take a little bit longer than a project that's not. And I'm sorry that that's the way it is, but that's my position in life, that's my station. So do I wish it could be a different station and I could be, and I could hire, you know, 30 workers to come in tomorrow and hammer it out? Sure. But that's not who I am. So I'll do what I can do, I'll get my... At the end of the day, this discussion isn't changing anybody's mind. I mean, we all came in here with a yes or no, we may as well just vote on it and get it over with. That's my opinion.
Okay. Alderman Schaefer?
This was for Director Polarecki. The drawing on page 90, south side, is that marking around there, is that a railing for that area? Do you have that?
Yeah, too.
Because where would you, where would you access? I assume that one faces the door, but it doesn't show any ramp or anything on there?
The original proposal to planning and zoning was actually to have our liquor in the park and we did have a railing at that time, but it's been pulled and that whole patio's been pushed back. If anything, we want less, not more. So if there's a drawing...
So do we want ordinance granting a conditional use, conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage of vehicles in conjunction with the towing and limousine business at 4910 West Elm Street? Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion as you just presented.
Second? Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Any discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee, excuse me, Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion to adopt an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a drive-in establishment and outdoor seating for a new Starbucks located at 4305 West Elm Street. Any discussion on this item by council? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, the only thing I really have a problem with is now you're looking at an establishment that will hopefully have five or six or seven times, well, probably a lot more than that with the drive-through as far as traffic in and out of the subject property. My concerns are the left turn going in if you're coming westbound. You can't make the left unless you're going through the left turn lane. And is that good proper planning? I mean, I understand, you know, even though I wasn't on the council, I remember when the council back in the early 90s took and approved this whole thing and that was an issue of ingress and egress at the time, figuring that sooner or later they would lose their full, you know, access once development started and, again, you know, it's not a restaurant type like Twisted Burger is where you have a car that comes in and it sits there for a half hour and, you know, one here or one there, I mean, this could be continuous. You're not worried about the car stacking as it's making a left-hand turn, just one car itself holds up that whole aisle, that whole lane, that second lane. And at certain times of the day, that can be critical. So I don't know if we put a no-left turn at certain times or what we need to do there, but something should be done because, like I say, that could really impact 120 as far as the flow heading west, especially in the late afternoons, early evening, when people are coming home from work. Other than that, I think, you know, it's great as far as what you're doing and I hope we find that Twisted Burger's moving somewhere else in the city, but it's a nice concept. I've seen Starbucks that, unfortunately, again, we're talking tightness, be nice to see a little bigger patio because I've seen them in other towns where they were built with larger lots that they could do that. It does look nice when you've got people that can casually sit there. Here with the outside patio, you'll be able to get a couple of people out there, but it's not quite as expansive as some of them. But the only, that's the only, the only thing I got is that left turn and I just don't know, I mean, maybe it'll be, maybe it'll be the state that will eventually, you know, next time they look at that segment of 120, maybe that'll take, take his, make it a right in, right out or something, I don't know. But I, like I said, if you look at the drawings itself, I mean, you see where the car is sitting there to make a left turn and they have to cross the left turn lane going in the opposite direction. So I don't know if there's any possible solution, but I don't think there is.
I don't know what there is. This is a very difficult and challenging project. We looked at going to the light, we worked on this for months. It's impractical, impractical and feasible, not financially feasible to go to the light, goes on city property. They're not changing or touching the entrance exit. Traffic's east and south in the morning, but you're right, going west and north in the evening. They did do a traffic study, that's why I made them do a traffic study, because of that concern. They did a gap analysis saying can cars get out safely? The traffic study concluded and made some recommendations. And I included them as part of my recommendation that they do all those things. That they did find that they could use the entrance, you know, a lot of traffic studies do that, but they did what I asked, the traffic study concluded, it worked, and I'm recommending they include the conditions and that's the best I find that we can do in this situation.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
So this is not something that has to be run by IDOT at this point since it's...
Well, if you ask, often the engineers say if they don't touch it, they, you might not, they might not have to go by IDOT. We'll see.
So I think the concern about the left turn is pretty valid. I mean, you look at the other Starbucks we have and they back up long and, I guess it's private property, it's not really a street, but they're by Kohl's and I've heard complaints about that. When this came up, somebody, a couple of people said something to me about it, but I guess I didn't realize that the left turn didn't have to be okay by IDOT.
I mean, we certainly can run it by IDOT. I mean, if that condition was put on, I mean, Starbucks would go away. I mean, any business that goes here is going to want that left turn there. How often is it used? You know, I don't know, it depends on the business. But that's why they didn't want to mess with the entrance and that's why, because of the existing flood plain, they didn't want to touch the building. It's a very difficult and challenging site, so it's, not saying we're trying to hide, I mean, IDOT certainly not going to not notice, but they don't want to really alter it much.
If you're in a car sitting in those yellow marked lanes, if you will, I guess I'm looking at the chief of police at this point, aren't you actually breaking the law at that point?
Correct.
So, I mean, the only way to truly make a left turn, if you can't just zip through and do it, is you have to stop in the westbound lane.
Correct. You would have to make the turn complete, wait till there was open traffic from both directions, pull out and make the left-hand turn.
Well, if you're westbound, you're talking about westbound. If you're westbound, come through the light and you're going to turn into this...
He's talking pulling in, you're talking pulling out.
Okay, yeah, you would have to stop in the inside westbound lane until it was your turn to turn in, correct?
Because, so what they have depicted is incorrect. I mean, they have actually a spot here where they're showing a vehicle, but it's really in the, what would be the crosshatched area. I don't have it in front of me. Did they impose that vehicle or was that, is that actually a vehicle? That did probably impose it.
Because, you know, obviously, traffic, that's traffic behavior. But technically, the reason why those lines are painted there is because the center median is not wide enough for it to be a left turn lane, you know, a left or right turn lane out of the center median. As soon as you get down closer to the auto zone, you'll see how it's wide enough then and then they take that and illustrate.
The depiction's on page 146. Let's look at it. So, I mean, if you have a vehicle there, that's a real photo there.
Oh, yeah, that's a real photo.
Yeah. So what's happening now?
Any other discussion? This time I'll open up for public input on this item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make public comment? See none. This time I'm looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a drive-in establishment and outdoor seating for a new Starbucks location at 4305 West Elm Street. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion as you just presented.
Thank you. Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Glab?
Just to fact that, I guess, must that left turn is, I still have reservations about that left turn. I don't know, very difficult to try and support. I guess I'd like the Starbucks look and everything else, it's just very difficult to support with the potential of blocking up 120 severely there. So I'm ahead.
Any other discussion? Alderman Curry?
Question, if we move forward with it and you do have an issue, I mean, a severe issue, is there any recourse at that point?
Yes, could be.
Whoever wants to answer.
Well, I mean, I could say a business could, Twisted Burger could leave tomorrow and another business could locate in there without coming to council and we, you know, and they could make turns left and right.
I mean, they're only coming here because they're putting a drive-through later.
That means no.
Which is what's creating all the traffic, thank you, concerns.
Well, I don't know necessarily, no, I think that's creating additional traffic, but I don't, I don't feel I'm qualified to make that answer.
Any other discussion? No. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, Chief, you probably know this more than anybody, if it does become a problem in the future, are we justified to, of course, you'd probably have to have IDOT require a no-left turn there.
Correct.
And they could put it in. I say they could, I mean legally, put it in. I guess that's the terminology I meant legally. So, in other words, if it does become a problem further down the road and we see that and we contact IDOT...
A no-left turn from the roadway into the business or a no-left turn out of the business on the road?
No, into the business. Again, that's the concern I've got more than anything else is this car stacking up or even blocking everybody else up in that left lane and trying to make a left turn on a busy time of the day.
I don't know if I've ever seen IDOT enforce a no-left turn from a roadway onto a private drive, but they, we can enforce left turns out of a private drive. They've enforced no-left turns at intersections, but I don't know if they would be able, I've never seen it signed in any other town either that would enforce.
I don't know if I've ever seen it on a state highway, I've seen it in streets.
Sure, right, yeah. Local municipalities, if they have the control over the streets, it would be, it would be hard to sign there because it's a four-lane road plus has a turn lane. It would be difficult probably to sign that where people would see. I was just asking Director Schmidt whether or not IDOT would consider shortening that turn lane to open up that middle median a little bit longer because my experience is that turn lane, even in peak traffic, is not full normally. It normally never has more than three or four cars.
That could probably alleviate a good portion of our concerns. I don't know, but, you know, working with IDOT, IDOT is tough. I mean, you know, maybe we need to ask IDOT to look at that entire intersection and I don't want to just start bringing up other things, but if we're going to look at that intersection, the crossway over there between Jewel and the lot across Oak, that becomes a very difficult situation over there with that crosswalk there and whatnot. That handle traffic link coincided with the 120 and Oak. So, I mean, I think you'd have to talk to IDOT about that one and because I'm the closest to the intersection, maybe we just need to talk about the whole intersection.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
I don't want to say, but I have to say no.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion item AA, Meyer Material Company's request for extension of its business of gravel excavation and processing. We have the, some people from the company, from Meyer Material, here. Mr. Willey, would you mind getting up to the podium? We'll...
And we'll go ahead and start off discussion or, or questions by council. I'll call on each individual council member around and then go through that once and see where we stand, so. Alderman Santi? Any questions, concerns?
I'll just, I sent a brief document to City Administrator Morfield and I expressed these concerns. I was in the planning and zoning meeting, listening to constituents in that ward that night prior to them even arriving here on future evenings. And there's, I don't, I don't have, I don't have definite, definite answers here, but I think there's, there's probably like, my concerns is about five to ten key issues here. Noise and hours are, are something that I really want to be discussed and want to be able to have some type of agreement that would be comfortable for both parties. Attorney McArdle mentioned something about the bonds and how, maybe how strong or how weak they actually are in regards to what they, what they can control for us, and I would look more towards a, a letter of credit in that situation. In regards to the berms, I know you build berms at a certain height. I am comfortable with those, I don't know if it's a possibility, but I brought it up in my documentation of possibly wooden fencing on those berms. I'd like to have some type of noise monitoring system somewhere, whether it be around the pit or, or very close to pit where, where we could, we could get readings. We've always received and were pointed out in the budgets from two thousand and four to last year in regards to amounts that were received from the company to the city, yet with those amounts, and, and I'm not pointing figures either way, but it's just that we do not have any reports that were submitted with those, those payments. And I'd like to see more of a reporting guidelines with the payments and also even maybe broken out into, into, into monthly or quarterly, depending on how, depending on the activity and the time during the year. We have, what, there's three or four different things we're looking at here, but I think the number one key component would be the annexation and everything else should fall into place after that. That's the way I'm looking at it. And I would, you know, I know there's a certain timetable here, I'm, I'm willing to look at that and being able to open up a door to more time if it's needed. But that's, you know, that's what I had, and I had spoken out like this probably about sixty days ago. So, other than maybe discussing a letter of credit in the berms, that's pretty much been on my mind and what I wanted to stay here in public again. Sitting through planning and zoning and the multiple meetings that we've had where numerous amounts, numerous people from those neighborhoods have spoken out. And I want to really appreciate what Randy's done for myself in regards to my tour and then also with some of the constituents from that ward that actually, that you did a tour with on a Sunday, I do appreciate that. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Where do we stand as far as our proposal, as far as per ton amounts compared to other communities in the area? There's several different pits that I can think of.
Well, there's, there's information in your packet on the last page of the agenda item for this, or at least the memo part of it, that Meyer and, you know, Randy can confirm these two, but the Meyer-Algonquin is three point four cents a ton. Meyer County, Meyer County pits south of Marengo, there's no tip fees, Meyer South Elgin, none. The Thalen-Laymore is ten cents a ton. I don't know what all the issues were there, but I know that's a ten cents. Consolidated Harvard is six cents and every five years it goes up a cent. And all pits that are next to Marengo are five cents. Meyer Harvard is six cents now, goes up a cent every five years. And then McHenry County pits, again, are none, all other McHenry County pits, there's no fee. And ours is at six? Six cents right now.
And also for Harvard, it goes up a penny every five years.
Right. Randy, would you like to expand just a little bit on the comments that we made about the, the health environmental as far as what has been done as far as the IEP A and everything? They do monitor that, do they not, over a period of time?
I can tell you that at the P and Z committee, we submitted the data that had been used in previous annexation settings where we were adding on additional property. We had done volumetric sampling around Valley to School. We've done, when the Miller family first started the mine back in nineteen eighty-eight with the expansion, they had done dust and noise sampling on the perimeter. So those were all submitted on a permit basis. Were permitted by the Illinois EPA for the operation of the equipment, that's like an air pollution control permit. And we also have a, a water pollution control permit that allows us to recycle all of our wash water and return it back into our own pot. Close loop system. And then we also have the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and that's where the bonding component comes in. We have a series of permits to open up sections of land and it's part of the Surface Mine Land Conservation and Reclamation Act, which is early seventies. And what happens is for every piece of land that's permitted by the state, we post a bond. So that right now there are about nine or ten open permits. And then the total bonds for all of those permits combined is nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And they're evergreen bonded, which means the abogee has the power to release only when the terms of plans are met. And those plans were filed with the city early on for the master plan and then we added on in nineteen eighty-eight. And all of those drawings were submitted as part, parcel of the individual permits to the Department of Natural Resources. They come out and inspect us a couple of times a year to make sure we're progressing along with what the plan says.
I, I guess, especially that last comment, the fact that it's not like you just go get these permits because you sent in your, whatever fee and they just send it to you, I mean.
No, it's a, it's a long-term.
It's all inspected and everything else.
Yes, and, and there's a state inspector, we actually submitted one of his most recent reports at the P and Z committee meeting and he's very happy with where we're at and, you know, how we're progressing on the project.
Does the city get any copy of that?
No, but I'd be happy to furnish.
I, I was just going to say maybe once a year.
Copies of the bonds?
Once a year, if we sent to the city, just so that we have it on file, if nothing else, and know that, that those inspections took place. And especially if we have residents out there that have any kind of reservations about something, at least we do have documentation at the city level that, that we know that this or that has been done, so that if they do come. I mean, again, you know, if nothing else, it just shows that we are being responsible. Some of the comments that I heard at the beginning of the meeting kind of disturbed me because I've sat in this chair for over twenty-one years and I have always fought for residents in the city more so than anything else. And I think most every council member, well, not most, but every council member that sits here feels the same way, regardless of whether they're in our wards or not. And I just want to assure everybody that needless to say, we're going to do what's best for the city as a whole, but we're also, we also look at every, every individual's concerns as well. That's all I got.
Alderman Schaefer?
I had four key things that I also shared with Director Morfield. The, one thing that I wanted to see was structure the agreement, this current agreement for a shorter term. Four to five years is what I stated. I also talked about increasing the, the tonnage fees from six cents and, and doing that in this agreement. Actually, the way that it was structured in this agreement, I was okay with. Again, I don't know the circumstances of our neighbors to the east and why that's ten cents, but after we got that information on what the other areas were at, that was insightful. And then, thirdly, I also had the restoration bonding issue, which we just, we got that information too. I don't know if nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars makes sense for what that is in today's terms for doing that. I do think in one of your notes, there was an additional amount too, it was over a million, for, there was additional bonding.
We have three one hundred thousand dollar bonds with the city.
With the city.
Yes.
See, and those amounts just did not seem adequate, but if everything takes those into account, those additional ones that are, those are state bonds, you talked about the nine hundred and forty-three thousand.
The nine hundred and forty-three thousand are actually issued to the state of Illinois.
Okay. And then, lastly, the, the noise and the dust issues have been the most vocal concerns from all the residents. And I don't know, I had several ideas of things that were already been discussed and I know that the noise issue for the trucks backing up is something that you've addressed already. The improvements that can be made for parts of the pit that may not be yours, I think is something we have to work with. The asphalt plant is not yours and I, apparently that's a, that's an issue. But the issues that are yours regarding the noise and the dust, what I would like to see with that is if we're going to make this a partnership and, and working for everybody, then we, and we have deterrance or fines for that, they have to be something that is actually somewhat, has some teeth to it or backbone to it. Similar to what we have with liquor licenses, if you violate a liquor license, you're shut down for a day minimum based on what the liquor commissioner wants to do. So, something in the, in the lines of that, I don't know if that could be worked into that agreement, but those were the four main things that I had brought up.
Thanks.
Alderman Curry? Yeah, thank you. You know, a lot of the issues, in fact, all the council's gotten a copy of the considerations I put out there. I assume you have them as well, Mr. Wilson? Did Scott share that with you?
I think I saw some comments that you made a few days ago, yes.
Okay. So I went through and, and I took the concerns that I had heard over the last two years, plus years, plus what I heard at the planning and zoning meeting. And I went through and tried to not only mention the issue, but also, again, a possible solution to those, to those individual issues and I tried to set it out by the different, various issues. First of all, I agree with what's been said already as far as the term. You know, I know, I understand there's a desire to, to put these two taxi or person, whatever you want to call it, north and south side into sync. That, that's achieved by, you know, the north side's not up right now, so it doesn't need to be anything really done with it at this point. But, you know, the south side, four-year extension would then sync up the two, come back in four years for what is normally a ten-year extension on north and south. That gives the opportunity, we do have a lot of issues, we do have a lot of concerns, and it gives the opportunity for, for us, for our residents and for you to basically show that, you know, we can make some changes. You know, there, the, the information put out recently by, came through our attorney as far as things that, I guess, understanding you're willing to do. There really wasn't much there than the white noise alarms, which were already discussed. Everything else was pretty much things that are required anyway, under current ordinances and current annexation agreement. So, you know, the, the issues, noise, first of all, noise, I mean, the issue is, is twofold, obviously, the level and when. And the biggest problem is, you know, waking people up. You know, and, and I can't separate the asphalt plant. Not theirs, it's on their property. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's part of it. But that's, the rest of the council can weigh in on that. You know, I gave some indications on noises, that things that could be done. I know there's a concern with the asphalt plant because they're under OSHA versus the Corrie because it's under EMSHA. And OSHA doesn't define things like backup alarms, other than they have to be audible over ambient noise. But they do have an out, which I mentioned, which is if you, you don't even have to have a backup alarm if you have a, a flagger. So that could be something that could be done if there's no other way to, to have a flagger in, in the early morning hours. The backup alarms, just in general, for the whole property, what you've changed to the backup alarms on your equipment, I appreciate, and, you know, and I think everybody appreciates that. But it doesn't really get into outside equipment. So one of the things I said in here is you have plenty of property. There should really be no problem having trucks drive in, pull through, so they never have to back up. You know, hopper trucks should really never have to back up because they could be staged and, you know, pull through the situation, load it and then out the door. And I, you know, I'm not going to go through every one of these, the council can read them for themselves, you can read them as well. I guess I would look at that in each of these areas, you know, what is it that, that we can get done to actually make an impact for the residents? Because just the white noise, I don't think quite, quite gets it. And I think there should be noise testing done, whether that's us or whether it's you or, or both. And the testing by our own ordinance needs to be done at the nearest residentially zoned property, regardless of whether it's in City McHenry or not. Doesn't specify. And that could be done at the fence line, right, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have to walk on somebody's property. Although I think if you ask somebody if you wanted to go through their property and test the noise, I think they would be more than happy to actually do that. As far as dust go, you know, I've heard a number of times where the gravel pit has, has reacted quickly to correct the problem and, and that, again, is appreciated on an upset condition, but I think that it doesn't seem like, and I could be wrong, it doesn't seem like there is a standard protocol for whatever you need to do to keep dust down. Watering the paths is usually the, the way it's done, but it seems like there needs to be a standard process for that. And it should not be as a result of complaint. So, I mean, we need to get it beforehand. One thing I didn't mention under noise is that in, in all the, not all of it, most of the prior annexation agreements and ordinances, it calls for all processing equipment to be enclosed in buildings. That's ever been done. And I know the residents just informed me that that's not the case. I think the wash house is, or at least the upper part of it, but, so that's something that's already been required that apparently hasn't been done. Give you an opportunity to respond.
I, I'd like to at least offer what I have on that.
Sure, sure.
Originally, the processing center was located on the east portion of the property, in the industrial zoned property where Curran's plant is. And we were allowed to wash twenty-four hours a day. Apparently, there was some noise coming from that wash plant on the quiet time of the night and it bothered the neighbors, so then we were asked to enclose the wash plant when it was on the industrial property, which we did. Then the second phase of the mine, we moved the processing center to the west. Then, the second phase of the mine, we moved the processing center to the west end of the property where it is today, in the late nineties. And in doing so, we bought a new wash plant, which was probably quieter, but also, we weren't washing twenty-four hours a day then, because the plant was producing quicker but more efficient. So, I talked to Alan Nohr about it, and he actually explained that, he actually put eighteen feet of siding around the bottom of it, but it was only to protect it from, try to keep the water warmer during the winter hour, so he could run as late as he could. And then ultimately, they put a de-watering screen in in two thousand and nine, which actually used less water altogether, and he took the panels down to put the de-watering screen in, and it was so quiet, they never put it back up. So, the enclosed building that, so to speak, really goes, dates back to, I'd probably the early, mid-nineties, and that was for the wash plant when it was on the east side.
But that's not what's stated in the annexation agreements or the ordinance.
That's how it was explained.
It says all processing.
I don't know how we would.
It says all processing equipment shall be enclosed.
I'm going with what I was, going with part of the wash.
Okay, thank you. One, one comment I will make on dust. I looked up on, on, and I know there's concerns about, and I think we do need to test, but I know there's concerns about the dust, and there's certainly concerns from aesthetic standpoint, and when I say aesthetic, what I mean is, obviously, it's all over the place, and people swimming pools, and on their homes or whatever. But I did find, and it doesn't necessarily mean what the resident experiences, but it is at least a good sign, all of Meyer's employee hygiene testing over the years, which EMSHA comes in and does, has, there's never been, and I could find anything over their permissible exposure limits that are established for both total dust and silica, which is a big concern. You know, gravel pit, the biggest concern is silica. So, that's good news that your employees at least are not exposed. It doesn't necessarily mean what a dust cloud might be going off the property, but I think there's some, you can find some comfort in the fact that generally, in an operation like that, if there's a lot of dust, and it's hazardous dust, it would show up normally in employee testing. So, that, that, that's good. I still think we should do some, some air quality testing, however. We did do them back in, I think you mentioned, around the school, I think that was back in two thousand and two, it's probably time to, to revisit that. I had an issue on stormwater, which we've talked about, it doesn't, it does really only involve parcel hay, which is also Meyer's property, but we have a significant amount of water, an unknown amount of silt that's going to be, that's coming down basically from that, that property. We're going to, we're going to spend, expend considerable sums of, of taxpayer money to build a, a detention area, and we've already purchased the property. And the concern, of course, is lots of sediment, it moves up a detention area pretty quickly, requires constant maintenance. There's, there are things that can be done, you could re, you know, I don't know the various costs of them, but, you know, that water can be redirected to the pit, can't escape if it gets there, or there are sediment traps that can be built into sewer lines, and then they're just, they're easy to get to, easy to clean out, and you guys have lots of equipment, so, you know, that, that's a possible solution. The reclamation plan has been mentioned by some residents a couple of times. It's nineteen eighty-seven, and it's thirty-plus years old. It probably should be updated. And, and I agree with some of the other comments, that, that we should be looking at letters of credit rather than bonds. You know, I quizzed our attorney at the last meeting about some bonding on another, another issue, but the response was basically, they're pretty much unenforceable. So, after hearing that, that just cemented in my mind anyway, a little further, that we really should have a letter of credit. The berms are already required, ten-foot high by forty-foot wide along all residential areas, and as far as I know, you've done all that, berms, all been done. They did, I did get a few complaints about driving on top of the berms. I don't know if that was just when they were being constructed, or whether that happened afterwards. I, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but it would be something that obviously shouldn't be allowed. We, we had comments on weeds as well. One, one thing I, I, I would be concerned about with the school is the, and I didn't walk the property, but I did go by there, the fencing is not real good there, and we've got children there. I, I just think it would be a smart thing to, to get better fencing. We had some comments on, nobody knows how to make a complaint. You know, I really think the complaints, for the most part, from residents, should come through the city, and that way, we're aware of them, and, and I know that the city does react to those complaints. But I also made a comment in here that if you get a complaint, we should be aware of the complaint, because I think sometimes that's not been the case, where you've gone out to talk to the resident, but not necessarily, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I just.
Normally, I've gotten through the city.
Okay, okay.
And then try to make phone calls and report back.
Okay, well, it's just a comment that we should always make sure that if, if it happens to come to you, you know, Raj should be aware of it, really vice versa, I guess. And, and we need to record those complaints. Some people talked about the road concerns. I think it's just smart business in the operation you're in. You've got to have a, I assume you probably have a guy that has to sign off on the papers, work for a truck, the truck's got to have paperwork to go down the highway with load on it for the product, simple matter of inspecting the truck at that point. Walk.
Those, those aren't our trucks, they're all customers.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
We provide them a place to truck their loads and clean off the rails and their spread pans and.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just talking about a check.
Capital mile of pavement to track out anything on the, keep it in the pit before they leave.
Again, but I'm just talking about a check with your people. That's, that was my mention. The fees, of course, we've heard about that, I think they should be increased, but either way, you know, it's just not a significant impact on the city revenue, so I guess my concern over that has been related, because I think, I think we should go, hey, if ten cents is the number, we should go with ten cents, and it should raise every year. But, the bottom line is, that's not going to change, in my mind, anything associated with what our residents are experiencing. So, we need to solve those problems. And then finally, on penalties, as was mentioned before by Alderman Schaefer, the penalties must have, we need to have teeth, because we have had repeated violations of, of things over the years, as far as operating hours and so forth, and, you know, I don't think we should continue to allow that. Hold on to the head.
What I would say would be echoing what's already been said, but I'll just point out going to be about five items that are important, especially to me. The term being a four-year term is, I think, a critical point, and then at that point, coming back and extending possibly for another ten years or whatever's needed, but a four-year term seems appropriate. The reclamation plan is outdated, it needs to be updated with a new measuring study to find out what the true cost of reclamation is at this point, and we need to have a letter of credit for the full amount of the reclamation. The sound mitigation steps that, you know, they're all we're going to mention, I think, are important, some combination of those, and a different system or starter system, penalties and fines in the case of violation regarding start times and noise violations. So, I mean, those are kind of at a high level, I think, the most critical points, in my mind.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
I have concerns about how complaints have been handled in the past, and how they're going to change in, in the future. From hearing from the residents and yourself, it didn't seem like in the past, things were on the same page as, as good neighbors. These people have to live there every day, twenty-four seven, and we need to figure out a way to, to work through issues that exist, and, you know, having the city CC'd and all information, all correspondence between both you. The reclamation plan, that definitely needs to be updated as well, and possibly shorter terms for this as well.
Alderman Curry?
Thank you. First, just going, this is going off of information that was agreed upon in discussions between Meyer Materials and our attorney. The white noise, backup alarms, I think is great, but I, I do agree that because they're not all your trucks that are going in and out, as well as while you don't have control over the other companies, if there was a path that, that where trucks did not have to back up at all, and could turn around without backing up anywhere on the property, that would be great.
You're talking about in the, in the loading area?
Yeah, I, I would say anywhere on the property, again. If, if it's feasible. I, I mean, I haven't been there, and I apologize for that, and I will be taking it up on that, but it sounds like there, there's potential to have a traffic flow where we're not having, the residents aren't happy to hear that backup.
Unfortunately.
Okay, not the case.
The way stockpiles and loading work.
Okay.
That the customers who come into the mine won't be able to be redirected in reverse or loaded at night or anything like that. However, on the flip side, I'm pretty certain that whatever noise is happening at the loading area is not audible to the residents because of the distance.
Okay, thank you. Agreed to the, the rise of the berms, another two feet, is that correct that you'd agree to that? Thank you. The, another thing that I thought was important, just as a check between the city and Meyer Materials, having those monthly, monthly documentations sent to the city, so I think that's really important. I was, I was also very curious as to what other communities were getting payments that, I'd like that we have some increments here, but, and it sounds like we're at least comparable to other communities. Of course, from my end, I'm always going to push for a little bit more, so if we could go, my, my suggestion, seven, eight, ten, for each five years, that would be my suggestion. But, I was curious from staff, Valley View School would have been, and District one fifteen, would have been notified from public hearing, correct? When there was a public hearing of the public hearings? And to the best of my knowledge, we have not received any documentation or complaints from, from Valley View or District fifteen?
No.
Okay. In the past, I had been very active with schools, and I hadn't heard anything. So, that might be interesting if I might reach out to them to see if they, they had I like Alderman Schaefer's idea, if, if there are violations, if possibly a shutdown, whether it be a day, half-day, whatever, because that gives us some teeth to reinforce everything. It's been stated by several places, the response to neighbors, and I think that's been, that's something that's really important, because it sounds like in the past, there hasn't been a, a very good response, or even knowledge of how to respond. Sounds like since you've come aboard, that you've been open to the community and to the residents, and try to make yourself available. I guess I, I applaud you for that, but that's something that needs to continue, and I think there needs to be a very clear, like, are you the person, or is there someone else on your staff? But the residents need to know, as a city, we can get ahold of you, but they need to know directly how to get ahold of you. Sure, I think it's important that we know as well, but, but they need to feel like they are being heard, and I don't think that that has been the case.
Our operations team is here, and so they're listening.
Okay.
You know, I, I live local, they live local, we try to be responsive. I, I know I had several tours with Burning Tree residents, probably about three or four years ago, when we were mining behind their properties, and then we went over to Whit Creek, probably behind the schedule by getting together with Glacier Ridge residents, but again, I'd be happy to furnish my phone number, Doug's phone number, whatever we need to do to be available, and also with the city staff, so.
Yeah, and maybe we can have stuff in the newsletter, the city website, as to where, what the operation should be as far as complaints. Last, but not least, I, no, actually, two more things, sorry. Wetting down the property, I, you know, as a quality of life, I can't imagine having dust, I mean, just normal dust is an issue, but having that dust, now granted, I, I also think there's some, you know, if you're going to live by it, a gravel pit, there's going to be more dust than there is going to be, like, where I live. When I moved to my development, it was brand new, and there was just open fields behind in four years until the development was finished, we had dust all over. So, I, I, as residents, I think you have to know what, where you're living in, what are going to be some of those hindrances for a while. I think that, and that is where some of the concerns came, because they had the expectation that in twenty eighteen, they weren't going to have that dust anymore. And so, now that they hear that it's going to be continuing, so we have to, and I say we, because I think we're in partnership, have to be cognizant of, of their concerns. So, wetting down the areas where there's traffic is, it's essential, I mean, it's just essential. And to me, that's part of that violation process. If it's not done, I think there needs to be, I think you need to be held accountable to that. That said, reality is, you're still going to have dust. I mean, I, I think that's just realistic, but I do think that, again, that's part of, you're, you're having the use, permission of having a mine, cognizant of the neighbors wetting down that area. So, last but not least, this time, for sure, reclamation. I, I do think that needs to be updated. I know it's still off a ways, but I think it's important that we all know what, what to expect. That's it.
I guess I, I'd say regarding the reclamation plan, it's on file, it was approved in the city many, many years ago. The state of Illinois has approved it, and the state of Illinois is monitoring our progress. So, I guess, is it just from the value of the bonding that you're second guessing it, or the design of the site? Because that's.
No, I would say the bonding.
That's it, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion by council of stuff that has not been mentioned, Alderman Schaefer?
Not that it's not mentioned, but to bring up the fencing on top of the berm, I've seen that other gravel pits, as a better fact, I think, went back twenty-some-odd years ago, I think they used to have a small fence along one-twenty up on the berm.
We have it on the, on the perimeter, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But it's not a wooden fence, it's a woven wire fence.
Correct.
On the posts, so the animals can run through it, but it creates a boundary, you know.
I just feel to some extent, unless we're really specific with that fence, I just tend to wonder, still wanted to wind up to beat the Austrian pines all over again from many years ago, to where, when they went all the way out west to Ridge, everybody wanted those Austrian pines and whatnot, and, you know, everybody's so, with landscaping and whatnot, and those Austrian pines, which were expensive, by the first year and a half, two years, there might have been three or four percent left, and I don't know if there is even one left on the property anymore. So, just so that we're specific, and we know what we're going to actually get when we come up with stuff like that, as far as fences on berms and all that.
Any other items by council? Randy, I'd like to give you an opportunity to answer back anything that you'd like to say, or, I have to touch on some things, but.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
You know, one of our, yeah, Mark Salad, and I've been attorney with Zanco and Ryan Salad in Crystal Lake, you know, one of the concerns, you know, that we have as we move through this process, and we certainly appreciate all of your time and attention to this, as we come up with a mutual agreement that makes sense for the petitioner as well as the city. You know, I don't mean to repeat what you all know, but I think it behooves us to remind you that, you know, this is a business entity that's been part of this community for over forty years. This is a business entity that has produced jobs throughout this city, it's produced infrastructure, it's built roads, it's built homes, it's built schools with its products, and the reality is, is that McHenry County is rich in this resource, and I realize that that has to be done in a reasonable and responsible manner. There are a number of layers of different ordinances and state laws that do come into play, that we do have to abide by, which we will continue to abide by. And just a reminder that at that planning and zoning committee, we did receive a five-to-one positive recommendation to move this forward. You know, in the fee structure, obviously, we have an industry here that does pay this annual fee, and there's not another industry or business, I think, in the city that pays the amount that this industry does, and probably rightfully so, but this is an industry that does pay this amount. So I think our dilemma as we move through this, we have seven aldermen with seven different opinions, and a mayor, and we do need to try and bring this to a consensus at some point in the next few weeks. Obviously, we have the annexation public hearing coming up on April 16th, so we do need to get to the point that we have some consensus, and that's what we hope to do. Randy, I'm sure was willing to discuss some items as we move through tonight, but, you know, for us, it's getting to an agreement, a reasonable agreement, so that we can continue on. Obviously, you know, one of the memos that was part of the packet, you know, did indicate that, you know, if we cannot reasonably address these concerns, you know, that they would not ratify continuing the operations. I just, you know, want to emphasize that I do believe that Illinois state law supports the fact that, you know, conditional use in this instance is pretty much tantamount to a principal use at this point in time, and that, you know, there are some vested rights here on behalf of the petitioner as well. So we have to balance these things in order to come up with a reasonable agreement, and we look forward to working through those issues with you.
Just trying to recap some of the finer points, and the reclamation plan came up several times, and I guess to try to find a way to appease people, I guess, from the financial side, is, is there a possibility of hiring an outside engineering to review the existing plans for the purpose of calculating how much outstanding liability there is? I've heard the term "letter of credit" that is affecting our working capital, I just assume keep the bonds in place that are with the state already, and the $300,000 that are with the city, but if there's an additional bond that we could add, if this engineering exercise would come up with a deficit, that would be something. The fees, I think we can talk about yet, we have to look at our own financial situation on that. Regarding the air and the noise, we've talked about, and actually, we started today stripping the area along the Glacier Ridge subdivision to actually increase the height of the berms. And by mine ordinance at the city, we're supposed to keep them at a minimum of ten feet, but the topography undulates a little bit, and in some cases, if we're lower than the neighboring properties, I'd rather see it come up a couple of extra feet, because I think that's just going to help line of sight, or when the trucks are actually hauling along the insides of the berms to deposit dirt, because that's, a lot of the impact is not direct mining and extraction, it's when we're reclaiming or we're opening up new cells, and those haul trucks, who are third parties, we've already actually equipped them with white noise alarms, so, because those are trucks that are going to be on the property line. But again, it's managing that traffic as well, that's probably just as important of an impact. And if we can keep the berms 12, 13 feet high, every couple of feet we can add on both sides will impact beneficially to the neighbors. The complaint system, I welcome something that is fair and orderly, so that everybody knows where everybody stands. I know Alderman Curry said he had three pages since he had been alderman, and I had only short answers to give him, because I think I'd only probably talked to two or three neighbors in the last two or three years. It's hard for us to make corrections as a neighbor without knowing exactly how we're impacting somebody, so I welcome that as well. I don't know if there's any other, there's been a laundry list of, I guess, questions, but those are the ones, I guess, I took, the noise and the fees and the rec plan and the complaint system is, indeed, those are the highest level concerns of everybody. If there's something else I'm missing, I'll have to go back and look at my notes.
Dust, so, times of operation? Dust and times of operation?
Time of operation, I guess I got to defer back to committee here. We'd certainly like to extend our duration of our permit as long as possible, because the restoration process alone for what's been opened up is going to take more than five years. There's going to be truck traffic back there restoring cavities that we're going to be opening up in the next four years, or whatever the term is. So there is going to be inconveniences past the five-year one. I do know that, and when Ms. Nader was on the tour, I mentioned, is it possible for us to move the crushing system out of the way of the Glacier Ridge residents in a faster time or in a timeline that might make sense, because eventually we'll be in retreat mode, we'll be going away from them, whether it's four, five, six years from now? I don't know if we have that math prepared, but at least on a duration of a permit, we'd certainly like a longer period than four years. When it comes to hours, our loading times, I've done some self-sampling, the loading is inaudible when I've been at the Glacier Ridge property line around Chickaloon Drive, I'm probably going to resample it a couple more times. When it comes to operating in the field, we really need to start at 6:00 a.m., but no earlier. We won't reverse the conveyor belts to take water off of them a minute before 6:00. But again, if there's probably relief, it could be on Saturday. Maybe we can start a little bit later on a Saturday, because I know some people complain that they hear it on a Saturday morning when they want to sleep at it. What other one did I forget? Dust, dust. We're governed by an air pollution control permit with the state of Illinois, so we have operating standards, and we have to fill out an annual emission report every year for the state. Most of our true issues air pollution-wise have to do with roadways, mostly around the plant site, but certainly when we're out stripping around the perimeter of the property or reclaiming, because that's open dirt that's coming. The actual mine process has a natural moisture content in it, and when it goes on the conveyor belt, it's actually a pretty dust-free situation. So the roadways around the conveyor belts and around the stockpiles are where we aim to control with trucks. We have onsite water trucks, we have a haul road that we're even talking about repaving, if we get the money. We sweep the entrance to make sure that that's clean as well. We look at, you know, windy days as places where we really got to be better operators, so that if we're out stripping a piece of land when there's a 35 mile an hour wind that's blowing in the direction of the neighbors, we should find something else to do. Those are the types of things that maybe we need. If there's a problem that gets fed back to us pretty quick, that says, hey, wait, whatever you guys are doing today, the winds, you know, we're eating something. But normally, on a 10 or 15 degree violent hour day, I think we're totally capable in managing airborne emissions.
And what's the EPA document you filed?
Annual emissions report.
Emissions from what?
That is, they calculate quantitative studies that say, for every ton of rock you crush, and how many miles you drive around your site, that you generate X amount of dust as part of your permit, and we file that every year.
So that's a report of what you generate?
Yes.
How do you determine that?
It's empirical formulas that were created by people much smarter than me that...
Oh, I mean, is it tested for?
No, it's tested for by scientists, and then we follow what they call the EP42 manual, which has airborne emissions, depending on how many times a rock is crushed, and tires tread.
Have you ever shown us that?
No.
Okay, well, why don't you show it to them, maybe they'll leave it important. I don't know what it means, but show it to us. We'll give it to our engineers, if it may answer their questions.
No.
That they're wanting dust, they're wanting dust emissions results, and that's what that is, right?
What that is, is an emission report for your production process. That's really what, it's all, it's not going to help you, but I'll be happy to show it to you. Because the permit is based on production rates.
They want something helpful, so if it's not helpful, then don't show it to us. They want something helpful, so let's work it out.
Like, we needed the Valley View school sites.
Right now.
Well, that's a study, yeah, that's true airborne emission study. That we did.
What does that mean? You put a machine out?
That means, yeah, we put a volumetric sampler on a property line and waited for data, it wasn't too dry, wasn't too wet, wasn't too, you know, was average type of everything, and then they run it for 24 hours.
Come on, speak up, is that what you want?
Well, that testing should be repeated, number one, and not just at the school, it should be done at the property lines of the residents who...
Glacier Ridge.
Well, particularly Burning Tree is where the biggest dust issues have been, and continue up to this day, even though, even though you're further away from them now, that's where the biggest issues have been. Dust sampling, basically, whether it's personal or whether it's an area sampling, is a pump. It sucks in air and runs it through a filter, and then you measure how much dust is...
And is, once it's measured, is there a standard by which it's dangerous, or too high, or whatever?
There is a federal standard that I think, for a 24-hour period, that, the report we submitted to the P&amp;Z committee would have the exact...
All right, so if we didn't do this, and we reach an agreement, and somebody says, hey, I have dust on my dining room table, we find, we make a complaint to you, that's what we would do to test it. And we would compare it to the federal standard, if it's in violation, there's a penalty, if it's not in violation...
That's getting a little bit more confusing that way. I think the volumetric sample is just, is a general, how much dust is coming out of the facility, whereas dust on somebody's deck might be a one-day event, because the winds are here, or we're running trucks too close to the edge where the winds are blowing it. That's why building the berms higher, getting areas reclaimed that are still open, those are high priority items, along Burning Tree, for instance.
Are you willing to do dust testing, whatever he's talking about?
We can do whatever we'd like to do, we've done it before.
Well, we'd like five people to agree, because that's what the vote we need, so is that, is that what you want to have done?
Can I? So, is that something that you have done periodically, or just on...
We've done it in past annexations.
AMSHA testing is done twice a year.
Twice a year?
Correct.
And where is that at?
Well, I was going to say, if that's done on our employees...
Correct.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
So that...
Tony, why don't you come up and at least explain how they do that?
Sure. Tony Genike is our area operations manager for our greater Chicago area, which our McHenry, Santa Gravissis is part of that market. So what I was mentioning is what Alderman Curry mentioned, is the federal mine safety and health administrations, sorry, to AMSHA. We are subject to two annual inspections, random inspections, that we are not aware when they're coming, and they come and they look at all aspects of our employee safety, one of which is dust exposure. So there's a pump, as was mentioned, that they tagged, that's worn on their person for the shift that they're doing the inspection, and that shows whether or not they are above or below the exposure limits as determined by AMSHA, by OSHA, and by...
Exposure for what?
For dust, specifically silica dust, but as well as full respirable dust.
Okay, do you have those results?
So an employee on the property at the site that is emitting the dust would be a very good indication of what the total dust exposure is.
And do you have those results?
Yes, those are publicly available on AMSHA's website, or data and reports that we'd be willing and able to share on a biannual basis as it occurs, or we can supply the most recent, however many years worth of data now.
Evening, everybody, I'm Doug Eberkamp, I'm the plant manager at McHenry site, I've been there for about two and a half years since the murder. And what Alderman Curry said was, they're publicly put out there, so he researched it as due diligence to see what kind of over-threshold amounts that we've had, personal exposure limits, they call it, and we haven't had any at the site since I've been there. So I'm not saying that, you know, things in the past, you know, have happened or complaints, and I would like to say, I've been there, it's had two and a half years since July of 15, and I had one complaint that Randy told me about, and that was on dust upon the stripping area. And that might be where the one was addressed right away, that was like a 30 mile an hour windy day, so personally, that's all I've ever had, Randy would call me, oh, and one other noise.
There was a noise complaint.
A Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Squeaky either, that we, like, form those corrections.
Mix complaint.
And one thing I would like to ask, on the dust, that field is agriculture? I've been up there, one combine's been there, so I don't, I've heard people talk about silver dust, it doesn't come from stone, or sand, it's brown, so I was just curious if the agriculture could be part of it too, soybeans or the corn being caught.
Can you get us copies of those dust results?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and that's not personal information, we can...
Wipe it out.
If it's published, it's published, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can put out employee social security numbers, and then we also do biannual testing, that's the standard for smoke school, we call it, which is the mission testing, it's kind of like current does the same thing, where we go to get certified by the state, so we have that as a record.
Those results we'll pass out, and we'll see if it's sufficient for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, if I may, that is on personal exposure limit, so it's a personal...
Yeah, I know, it's on personal...
Yeah, so it's not the same as an area sample, which was done around the school back in 2002.
Well, does nobody want to see it, we won't put it through the examiner.
No, I, no, I just...
I know you're saying, I just want to get the information to you that you need, because we only have two weeks or a week to the hearing.
Right, so if on an ongoing basis you could provide that, I think that would be great. I know it's public, but for ease of everyone's mind, if you could have that forwarded, ongoing, I think that would be useful information. I understand what Alderman Curry is saying, though. I guess my request would be then, also, if this is something that, I don't know what this takes, and if you have the equipment to do this, but if, maybe twice a year, both, because I do think the school is, it's really important there, because we have children, at the school and one other location, you know, twice a year, we could have that test that you said that you did years ago.
A volumetric test?
Yes. Is that something, and I'm just throwing that out...
I guess I should price it out before I start nodding my head, but it does take some coordination to get it out there, and the weather, you want it to be right.
Sure, and I just said twice a year, I'm open to other suggestions, but as a starting point, I thought that seemed, since the employees were tested twice a year, I thought, so I just used twice.
And Doug raised a good point about what we call smoke school. Every one of our mines has at least one, if not two, people who are competently trained...
Opacity readings.
What is it?
Opacity readings.
Yeah, opacity readings. So our permit, our air permit, is written with opacity limits in it, and so our mine managers and personnel are trained to know when a cloud that we're generating is above or below the thresholds of a permit.
Any other questions or concerns by council? Alderman, say anything?
Randy, you dusted upon Saturdays, hours of operation Monday through Friday?
Yeah, I think I said, that, starting at 6:00 a.m. is really where we have to keep Monday through Friday.
And that is for what operations? Everything?
That's the field, that would be...
That's just the field?
Well, that means we can still load at 5:00 a.m. Well, that means we can still load at five AM.
Okay.
The, the loading and maintenance is five AM to eight PM. Now, the processing, which starts in the field, so all conveyor belts, basically. So anything that's fed through the conveyor belt line is six AM to six PM.
And the crushing.
That's crushing too, yes. That's all processing.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, you've said several times that you, you must load at five AM, and I don't know if you read my comment on that. That means a truck driver has to get to your location by five AM.
Oh, yeah.
What is the issue with having, with loading them out the afternoon before, and they go to their, they drop the truck in their yard or wherever it normally sits overnight, they pick the truck up in the morning and they deliver it directly to a job site, they're going to get there quicker than having to come to your location and then go back?
I'll let Tony handle that, because there's probably several answers.
Well, yeah, so we, we can and we do do that as much as practical, but there are also federally mandated rules on truck drivers' hours of service and the number of sequential hours of service that they're able to safely operate a truck before they're required to have downtime for rest periods. And so most of our truck drivers tap, excuse me, tap out on their hours by the end of the shift, by the time that they're making their last delivery for the day, before they're, so to be able to circle back and get a, an extra load, if you will, would, would cut into their ability to, they get paid by a tonner by the, by the, by the load, so it would cut into their ability to provide for themselves in that, in that case.
But if you did, if they were, if they were not required to travel from wherever they are now to the location and then go back, it seems like that would, that would reduce their hours in the morning.
If we had a trucking out, if we had a trucking company that was headquartered right next to us, that would work perfectly. But unfortunately, we don't.
Where are these trucks coming from mostly?
It varies, some of, some of them are, are ones that we have relationships with about a hundred roughly haulers throughout the greater Chicago area, but that would, that would include truckers that are stationed all the way far south in Morris, Illinois, and south to cover our, our locations down there. The ones that we have relationships in that area, I, I'm not certain of the number, but we also only represent roughly sixty percent of our loads, meaning that the other forty to fifty percent of our loads are customer, customer contracted haulers.
So this is going to be difficult to do, I would recommend that Meyer, take the draft of the agreement, any agreement, the zoning or the annexation, and put together your best possible responses, given everything that's been said, and send it out as soon as possible. We don't communicate a lot during the meeting, between meetings, the city council and myself, that's for sure, so I don't quite know what we're going to do with it after you give it to us, other than pass it out. But that's the best you can do.
We will.
If we get, if we get comments individually back to the city administrator or the mayor or me, we'll give them back to you, and if you want to generate another one in response, that would be fine.
It's gonna be better.
Yeah, there's just no communication between the city council, so they can't, you know, really effectively discuss what you say, but, you know, we can make some progress between now and the next meeting, and then we need to make substantial gains at the next meeting in order to try and get this done. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, staff reports, are there any staff reports this evening? Mayor, city council comments, all I have is, just want to congratulate from the county police department, I'm receiving a fifth reaccreditation by Kalia with excellence. You know, I, I actually felt honored to go to Dallas last weekend and with the chief, Deputy Chief Walsh, and it, it was a pretty cool experience, you know, you know, how many police departments are actually Kalia-certified and how many aren't? So to be in that elite police departments is, is great, so I'm proud to be the mayor of a, a city with a police department like that, so congratulations, Chief, for taking. Any council comments? Alderman Schaefer?
I just want to go back to the, the Hidden Pearl Cafe, that agenda item that was here before, and this is probably for you, Ross, because you'll probably talk to him first thing in the morning. I, speaking for myself, and it's not that we're against it, I just think there's some things that need to be tightened up and looked at and, and presented so those questions can be answered. I don't, I don't want to make it look like he's battling the city in any way, and I think that's probably how he sees it, how he left, so I just wanted to suggest that.
He took it exactly that way. He got into a text, I could just recite it.
Oh, did he? Okay. Well, then you, I, you know-
I'll talk to him.
I just, I, again, it's just, it's trying to make sure that the right thing is done first time, is, is all that I think we're trying to do, and I, I totally agree with the fact that he's putting a lot of his own money into it and, and he's doing it, but I, I just follow the process and, and get it done right the first time.
Alderman Santi?
Yeah, just to, to back that up, I, I'd love to do a walkthrough with him too, along with staff, if, if he's willing to, to just give me, give me an update of, you know, just show us how it's going.
I think, if I can speak for-
Sure.
I think I can sit down with him and Doug and I and Dan can come, come to some sort of timeframe and nail some things down, so I, I understand where everybody's coming from, and I think we can probably work something out and get him back in here, you know, but again, with some nailed-down timeframes.
I don't know how you could do that, Doug, wouldn't that be starting over?
I think, you know, we've come this far, we, we need to tighten up a couple issues, we need to clean up a couple things, I think-
But I mean, we have the zoning here.
We're not changing anything.
It was denied. How do you start over? Without starting over? Well, we'll have to talk about the procedure.
I mean, the zoning thing was in May of seventeen, twenty seventeen.
I know, but we took a final action. We, we denied his relief. I, I have to look at that, but that's-
Well, I guess we, we got to regroup, because we, we changed it.
Right. Any other discussion, any comments by, any more comments by council? I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. At this time, we're, ask for a motion to enter executive session, so I'd ask the public to please exit, exit the room while we're in executive session, and after the executive session, you'll be able to re-enter.
And that's for?
And that is for executive session for the purchase or lease of real, real estate property for the use of public body. Five ILCS one twenty dash two C five. This time, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purchaser or lease of real estate property for the use of public body, five ILCS one twenty dash two C five. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion.
Second? Alderman Webb?
Second.
Clerk, please come on.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet?
Yes.
Alderman Dine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Thank you.